Good morning. We're going to get started this morning with an invocation led by Sir Rob Singh of Interfaith Alliance of Oklahoma, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Eric Newton of Boy Scouts PAC 226. Please stand as you are able.
(Singing) Sajna Sant Aao Mera, Ananda Gun Gaaye Mangal, Kasimala Mit Jaaaye Pareer, Sajna Sant Aao Mera. Oh, divinely friends, let us get together. Let us communicate, reflect, understand, and live the divine virtues and be happy. Our vices and sins will be erased and distanced. With humility, imbibe the divine message to enlighten our ignorant minds. By the grace of divine, our mind will live the oneness with our Creator. I have found the eternal message by the grace of divine. Nannak is constantly in gratitude for that very moment. Divine, our body and mind are yours. You are our parent, and we all are your children. In your grace, there is endless stability, peace, and happiness. No one knows your limits. You are the highest among all highs. The entire creation is strung in your thread. That what has come from you is under your will. You alone know your state and extent. Nannak is forever in gratitude to you. One eternal divine in all, the Oklahoma City Council invokes your presence, blessing, and guidance at today's meeting led by Mayor David Holt. This council of diverse thinking and background thanks you for the responsibility to serve the people of Oklahoma City. We recognize that our collective wisdom and efforts shape the future and the lives of who live here. Guide our meeting with a unity of purpose in our decisions. Keep us focused on our goals and make us work together with love, respect, integrity, and a commitment to excellence. May we work and lead with open minds, hearts, and a spirit of collaboration striving to create an environment of inclusivity where every voice is valued and every contribution is celebrated. Bless us with strength and discernment of intellect to navigate the complexities and challenges with a bold vision, courageous action, and humble minds. May our council be productive, purposeful, and ultimately serve what is best for Oklahoma City's peace, growth, and prosperity. Unite us all in oneness with the glue of your love and grace. Align our minds to work in accordance with your virtues of compassion, forgiveness, positivity, kindness, sharing, and caring. May we feel your protection, remembrance, and connection in this meeting. Connect us with those in whose company may we live your spirituality. Help each other practice it. In the name of Nannak and the divine word, may there be total optimism, and through divine will may this council, Oklahoma City, all creation, and humanity prosper. Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, in liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, Sir Rob, and thank you, Eric. I call this meeting of the City Council to order, and we will begin with some presentations, and I will make my way to the front for that. All right, why don't we have our friends from Dead Center come forward? No, all of you, come on.
Yeah.
You got up early on a Tuesday. You might as well do the whole thing. All right. So it is, in fact, believe it or not, the 25th anniversary of the Dead Center Film Festival here in OKC. We'd like to learn a little bit more about it, and so I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas Oklahoma City is at the dead center of film culture each June during the annual Dead Center Film Festival, and whereas celebrating its 25th anniversary, Dead Center has grown to become Oklahoma's largest and most celebrated film festival. And whereas Dead Center screens hundreds of films, attracts thousands of annual visitors, and showcases many of Oklahoma City's premier venues and attractions. And whereas Dead Center is the only Oscar qualifying film festival in the state. And whereas Dead Center has been named one of the 20 coolest film festivals in the world by Movie Maker Magazine and one of the top 100 best reviewed festivals on Film Freeway. And whereas Dead Center has brought national recognition to some of Oklahoma's most talented film industry professionals through its Film Icon Program. And whereas Dead Center is one of the pillars upon which Oklahoma's successful film industry has been built. Now therefore, I, David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim June 11 through 15, 2025 to be Dead Center Film Festival Week in Oklahoma City.
Thank you. Well, we've talked a lot in this chamber over the last few years about our growing film industry here in Oklahoma City, and certainly Dead Center, with 25 years of history now, was at the forefront of that for a very long time. And at the forefront of the forefront is the unsinkable khaki porch. And we would love to hear a few words from you khaki. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Actually, hearing that proclamation makes me very tearful. I'm very proud of what we've accomplished in 25 years. The mission of Dead Center Film is to inspire, promote, and celebrate creativity and community through film, and we do that every day through three pillars: education, continuum, and the festival. And what we've talked about, the festival is coming up. It's June 11 through the 15th. We're so excited about all the things that will be happening that week. We started at City Arts at the Fairgrounds with a handful of films started by Jason and Justin Floyd, and we will be returning to Oklahoma Contemporary as a DC hub. And so we'll be coming home to Oklahoma Contemporary. And all that's happening between June 11th and the 15th can be found on our website, deadcenterfilm.org. And a shout out to the mayor. We are celebrating him as a community icon this year, and we will have a conversation with him and Wayne Coyne on June 15th at The Oak with our closing night screening, UFOs of the Zoo. And so I hope you will join us throughout the week, and in particular, join us on June 15th to celebrate Mayor Holt. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear it for our Dead Center crew. There you go. That is yours to keep. Thank you all. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
I can't help it. First, congrats on 25 years. Part of Dead Center, I gotta invite you. I get to hang out with these cool kids on a panel come on Friday the 13th. Thank you so much. There's going to be a remembering. Thank you. That's not for me. We're going to be doing a remembering David Lynch panel discussion, and it's part of Dead Centers 25, and that is going to be with myself, Dalton Stewart, Bria Daniel, and Paris Burris. And we are going to be at the Oklahoma Contemporary that you just heard. So it's 11:00 AM on Friday the 13th. And congrats on your honor.
Thank you. All right, next up, Shannon. Come on down. Shannon Cox, our Employee of the Month. Should all of this go well, because this does require a vote, so we'll see how. Let's learn a little bit more about you, Shannon. So I would ask clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Shannon Cox has served as a city employee for 14 years and is a public information and marketing manager for the Public Works Department. And whereas Shannon leads communication for the Public Works Department, keeping employees and residents informed through timely and transparent updates. And whereas Shannon demonstrates strong leadership by supervising the communications team, handling public inquiries, and supporting creative projects and events. And whereas Shannon launched Center Line, an employee newsletter that strengthens department-wide communication and coordinates Public Works' Heart of the City campaign. And whereas Shannon created the Hidden Heroes video series, which honored the Public Works Department's role in the Oklahoma City bombing response that led to a partnership with the Oklahoma National Memorial. And whereas Shannon highlights Public Works employees through innovative storytelling that builds pride and awareness across the city. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Shannon Cox, May 2025 South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Yes, well, thank you. Okay, so this is a resolution. Before I give the floor to you, I'm going to go ahead and see if I can get a vote on this. So let's see if we can get a motion in a second. We have it. Cast your votes. I wish to vote aye. Passes unanimously. Shannon is probably one of our better-known city employees, because it is, in fact, your role to be out front and on some pretty important issues, and certainly in an area we'll be talking a lot about this year as we head towards a bond issue vote. But Shannon, we would love to hear a few words from you. The floor is yours.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. It's just been an honor and amazing to me because it started as a temporary job here. It's turned into a wonderful career where I've met some amazing people that I work with throughout the community as well, and I'm just thankful to serve Oklahoma City.
We are grateful for you and the way that you represent us. So let's hear it for Shannon Cox. All right, that concludes Office of the Mayor, which brings us to item four, Items from Council. We have item 4A. This is a resolution approving travel expenses for Council members Carter and Stone Cypher to attend an upcoming NLC meeting in Columbus in July. We could take a motion on that. I have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes eight to one, and with the necessary six affirmative votes. Item five, our City Manager Reports. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, we have. Oops. We have two items that are on today. We have the Sales Tax Report, the Sales and Use Tax Report for May. And in this one, we do have improvement in our sales tax, which is very encouraging. It's 3.7% growth. But you look at it over the year, starting from June going through May, I'm sorry, July going through May, and we're down about 7%, about 0.7% from last year. And so we're still seeing a little bit of decline. We do have 2% growth projected. So the biggest issue between sales and use taxes were about $12 million below budget. Our expectation is to finish somewhere in that neighborhood. We'll have one more check that we have for June for sales and use tax. But it is setting the stage for the challenge that we have in the budget for this year. I feel like we're in a good position to manage that with the level of reserves we have in this year. Going into next year, you all know, we have the budget on today of having to make some adjustments to get ourselves back in line with where we project our revenues to be. But it was good to see the sales tax bounce back a little bit in this month. And then we have Claims and Payroll on. That can be found on okc.gov. And that's all that I have.
All right, thank you. Item six, our Journal of Council Proceedings. We have items A and B. We could take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item seven, requests for uncontested continuances. We have listed here 11D and 11F, which will both be deferred till June 17th. Is there anything else, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, beginning on page 17, we have item 1101, Dilapidated Structures. All of these items that I will list out in the various areas of the agenda will be stricken from the agenda. Item B, 2502, North Military Avenues to Renotify the Owner. Continuing on page, onto page 18, Unsecured Structures, item 11P1. We have item C, 1533 East Madison Street, the owner is secured. Item E, 3120 South Robinson Avenue, the owner is secured. Item J, 1716 Northwest 17th Street, the owner is secured. Item L, 5930 Northwest 19th Street, the owner is secured. Item N, 4416 Southeast 44th Street, the owner is secured. On item 11Q1, still on page 18, Abandoned Buildings. Item B, 1533 East Madison Street. Item E, 2502 North Military Avenue. And item J, 1716 Northwest 17th Street. And then K, 5930 Northwest 19th Street. And those are stricken for the same reasons they were on previous items. That's all that I have.
Okay, thank you. Item eight, Revocable Permits and Events. Item 8A is a revocable permit with the Perry Publishing and Broadcasting Company for the Juneteenth Art and Music Festival, June 13th through the 15th, and Booker T. Washington Park and Page Stadium. We have Connor Neal.
Good morning. My name is Connor Neal with Perry Publishing Broadcasting. This will be our 17th year doing the Juneteenth Festival on the east side, which is a remarkable event. I invite everyone out every year, so if you haven't showed up, it's your turn, you know. But this year, we're doing something a little bit different. As we added last year, we did Thursday and Friday. Friday is Jazz in the Sunset, and we will be playing the Thunder game. Then Saturday is the full festival, and we did add something a little bit different this year. Thursday, June 12th, we are doing the Men of Color. There's an O triple C, and we are honoring a couple of city employees, state employees, which is Sheriff Tommy Johnson's getting an award, as well as Chief Ron Basie is getting an award. So some that we are adding, so it's pretty cool. So if you haven't had the opportunity to come out, please come out.
Awesome. Thank you. Councilman Pennington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very excited and looking forward to this event, as always. It's like a big family reunion, and so very relieved to hear the Thunder game will be playing on Friday. So look forward to seeing you there. And with that, Mayor, I'd like to move approval.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 8B is a revocable permit with Red Coyote Running and Fitness for the Red Coyote Love Run 5K and 10K on June 28th along the River Trail. And we have John Oslund here.
Good morning. Morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This will be the seventh year for the Red Coyote Love Run, and our fifth year to hold it in partnership with Social Capital down by Scissor Tail Park. I've got a couple of changes to the route this year due to trail construction on the north side of the river. Going to cross over and run along the South River Trail. We're very excited for this event again to be on the same weekend as the Pride Festival. So many of the people who come and participate in the celebration of everybody for this particular run can move on over to the festival afterwards. Looking forward to another great year, great run. It has grown each and every year, and expect to exceed 1,000 people this year. So appreciate you guys. Invite each and every one of you guys to join us on June 28th.
Thank you. This crosses into wards four, six, and seven. So anybody who wants to join in.
Yeah, I would just like to say it sounds like a fantastic event. I'd love to move for its approval.
Thank you so much.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you all.
All right, item 8C is a revocable permit with the Riversport Foundation for the Stars and Stripes Regatta on June 28th in the Boathouse District. And we have Trisha Downey here.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Trisha Downey, National Event Manager at Riversport. We are super excited to host the Stars and Stripes Regatta Festival again this year. It starts at 8:00 AM with a U.S. Rowing sanctioned Masters Rowing event. Starts at 8, goes to about 1:00. Then there's a little break in the afternoon, and then about 3:00, we start our OG&E Night Sprints. Because of AMAP's III Project in June of 2013, we became the first race course with stadium lights. And they say, as you build it, they will come. This river, this stretch, is still the only water race course that has stadium lights. So this is an absolute bucket list for rowers to come to Oklahoma City. At 2, 3:00, the Paddle Fest Dragon Boat Festival starts. Dragon boats take 10 people, so if the city council here wants to get in a boat and experience what it's like to paddle, I will personally set that up for y'all. But it goes till 10:00 at night. We also have a Masters Rowing event in the evening. Fireworks at the end because it's Stars and Stripes Festival, and food trucks and fun will be had by all. So do you have any questions for me?
No. Councilman Pennington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I accept the challenge. I will get in the vote. So I want another council member to join me, maybe Councilman Stone, because I know he's experienced with the boat. So you want to join me?
Sure.
Okay. So you've got two. Very excited about this event, and now looking forward to getting in the boat, for sure. With that, I move approval.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8D is a revocable right-of-way use permit with Oklahoma Pride Alliance to hold the Oklahoma Pride Alliance Downtown Pride Parade on June 29th on Walker. And we have Kylan Durant.
Good morning. My name is Kylan Durant. I use he and they pronouns, and I'm the president of Oklahoma Pride Alliance. I first want to say, as someone who stands at the intersection of Juneteenth and Pride, it is incredibly important and powerful to me that both Juneteenth and Pride are on the same agenda at our city council. We have an incredible festival that happens before the parade. It starts on Friday, and we will have David Archuleta from American Idol performing, along with Daya. So it's going to be an incredible evening. That evening also has our Artist Avenue. And then Saturday kicks off with our Wellness Saturday. There's all sorts of exercise, yoga, cycle bar, rumble boxing that happens. And then we also have our Community Zone, and that is an incredible place for people to gather information about community resources that support our community. And then we will also have Baby Tate that night. So we have two incredible nights of entertainment. And then this all culminates in a parade on Sunday that starts at 11:00. And it's going to go downtown. It's going to march right past City Hall and then turn on the Boulevard and end at Scissor Tail Park. It should be a fantastic event, and if you haven't been out there yet, I highly encourage it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hammond?
Thank you. Well, very excited to again host a Pride celebration in Ward Six, so I'm very happy to move for approval.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, item E is a revocable right-of-way use permit with the Plaza District Chamber of Commerce to hold Live on the Plaza on June 13th and August 8th on Northwest 16th. I might also mention, item F is a revocable right-of-way use permit with the Plaza District Chamber of Commerce to hold the Plaza District Festival on September 27th. We have Rachel Crawford here, and you're welcome to kind of talk about both if you want, and then we'll vote separately.
Yeah, good morning, City Council. I'm Rachel Crawford, Executive Director with the Plaza District. And some of you know me, some of you don't. One of the things when people ask me what exactly it is that has given the Plaza District this, in our Renaissance era, if you are, a big comeback since the pandemic, are our events. And we have done Pride on the Plaza since 2019. Some people go, why do we have three Pride festivals? It was never meant to be the third Pride Festival. We do a different theme every month, but the Plaza District is very, very queer friendly. We have a lot of queer business owners. I myself am part of the community, my colleague Casey Longacre is. And so we take with us our experience from 39th Street Pride and Pride Fest Downtown and helping produce those events and bring it to the Plaza District. Last year, we had 14,000 people, so it was absolutely necessary for us to close the street on June 13th. We have a ton of live entertainment, community resources. We're also doing a drag history museum. We want people to understand that drag has been here and will continue to be here, and it is a very, very powerful art form. I think a lot of people really could consider comparing it to theater, and our state theater is right there in the district, Lyric Theater. So I do encourage you to come. It will be a ton of fun. We're also doing a U-Haul with a lesbian DJ showcase, so that's super fun. We also bring back Skate the Plaza. We partner with Money Run's everything, and it is a ton of fun. We have about 8,000 to 10,000 people out, weather permitting. We turn 16th Street into a giant skate park. Punk bands, hip-hop acts, heavy metal, ton of fun. And then lastly, we bring back Plaza Fest for its 26th year. We partner with ACM at UCO, Oklahoma City Arts Council. Art Moves does a lot of work with us, we're very grateful for them. And we have three live music stages. It also coincides with the 10th anniversary of Plaza Walls Mural Expo. On that day, on September 27th, we see about 35,000 people in the Plaza District, and I believe certainly that with city council's approval, we'll continue to be able to do our events, keep everybody safe, keep the street closed for larger events, and I hope that you will come join us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hammond, if you just want to walk us through both of those votes?
Yeah, both events or series of events sound like amazing programming, as you always do, so very happy to move for approval for item E. Maybe?
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. This is on item E. Passes unanimously. And then we'll bring up item F.
And I'm happy to move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, item 8G is a revocable right-of-way use permit with Red Coyote Running and Fitness to hold the Red Coyote Juneteenth on the East 5K on June 20th on North Rhode Island. And we again have John Osland.
Good morning again. We are very excited to be a part of the Juneteenth weekend. We'd like to thank JB and the Juneteenth on the East Committee, who is going to be up next, but it's hard to believe, it's already been four years, this will be the fourth running of our event. It is, we kick off the festival weekend on the Friday evening. We're still waiting for a year when it's not 300 degrees, so if you guys could make a few calls, we'd appreciate it. But it's grown to be our biggest event by participation and by registration, and it's really just a super exciting time. We're very welcomed in the neighborhood. It runs through the northeast community neighborhoods. Really something to see, it's something to be a part of, so we invite everyone to join us on Friday evening, June 20th, and hope to see you guys all there.
All right, thank you. Councilman Pennington?
Excited once again to welcome the run back to our community, so you get to see beautiful northeast OKC, Seven Heaven. So I'm excited, Mr. Mayor, to move for approval.
Put motion and a second. Cast your votes.
Thank you guys so much.
Passes unanimously, thank you. 8H is a revocable right-of-way use permit with With Love OKC to hold Juneteenth on the East on June 21st on Northeast 23rd. And we have JB Williams here. Good morning.
So we started with Love OKC, I think 2019, and the idea behind With Love was to uplift, you know, artists who were rarely ever seen, and also uplift art on the east side of Oklahoma City. And so we've been doing that, and this is our fifth year for Juneteenth on the East. And we didn't know when we started we'd even keep doing it, but the community kept asking for it, so here we are, and it's all volunteer-based, and, you know, so many community members and organizations help us put this on. So I'm going to pass it to David, so he can kind of give you all a rundown of the events for Juneteenth on the East.
Good morning, everyone. We're very excited to host this celebration of freedom again on northeast side. As JB mentioned, With Love really is focused on uplifting northeast community through the power of education, community, and arts. And we do that by cultivating environments for artists to thrive while honoring our history and helping shape our future. And that's what Juneteenth is all about on Juneteenth on the East this year. We're excited, a number of partnerships, you heard the Red Coyote Run that's happening for the fourth year on Friday evening at 7:00 PM. We're also partnering with the Innovation District, hosting a Black Creativity Panel, and have a world-renowned fashion designer, April Walker, coming in town to host a panel discussion on fashion with local Oklahoma City fashion designers, as well with a fashion show that's going to be at Innovation Hall at 5:00 PM on Thursday, Juneteenth, opening up our weekend. And then what we're here for today is the annual festival, which will happen on 23rd Street, and we'll be shutting down 23rd Street for about three blocks, and we'll have over 80 vendors there sharing goods and services, over 20 food trucks. We'll have a kid's zone, and we're grateful for our partnership with the Thunder and the Zoo and the Arts Council, providing activities for the kids. And then we'll have local performances from people throughout the community, starting at 3:00 PM going all the way until 9:00 PM, with our headliner this year, Big Crit, coming in from Mississippi. So we're very excited to again celebrate freedom, celebrate Juneteenth, and really celebrate one Oklahoma City where we continue to create an environment of belonging for all that are here in our city. So thank you for having us again.
Thank you. Councilman Pennington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say a really special thank you to you all for the work that you've done. And I know we have a tremendous crowd here to actually support this event, so if you're here, if you serve on the Juneteenth Committee, or you are here in support of this permit, would you raise your hand, stand, something? Because it's a lot of them who are here. Having a strong community, having fantastic events doesn't happen by accident. It happens because we have great leadership and people who are willing to put their time and their talents to work for the betterment of our community. So I want to say thank you so much. I'm excited to support this event, and with that, Mr. Mayor, I move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, now we'll recess the council and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through K we could take with one motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OCMF A and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A through D we could take with one motion. Put motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OCPPA and reconvene as the council, where we're on item nine, the Consent Docket, and we have a scheduled presentation on item BI. And that is all. Is there anything else that a council member wishes to pull out for a separate vote, or comment, or question?
Yes, Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Can we hear a bit, or would it be possible, rather, to hear a bit on item BF, as in Benjamin Franklin? Thank you. And then I also would like to hear a little bit more, I just received a bit more information, but on item BH, related to our city's new mobile integrated health team.
Okay.
And I believe that will be all. Well, I'd like to see this, have the public see this public art on item V that's coming to honor Route 66 and 23rd and classing, and that's it, please.
Just to be clear, that's actually a...
Oh, we haven't got the art?
Request for qualification.
Then I got ahead of myself, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
Okay, no worries.
It was that Ben Franklin reference, that's what it was.
All right, is there anything else? All right, hearing none, we'll take them in order then, which means we'll start with BF, Councilman Cooper.
Yes.
Come on up, so this is just a bit of a sequel to some of our Airbnb work that I think's really going to matter a lot to a lot of residents, so if you wouldn't mind telling us where we are in the process.
Kelly Williams, our Chief Innovation Officer, is going to speak to this. I think, I just wanted to explain, express this, my appreciation to Kelly and her work, but having Kelly be able to work with this and be kind of a neutral source that works with helping us look at different areas where we can make improvement, I think it's just, this is just an example of how innovation is really helping us in our organization. And so I'll let Kelly take this. She works with a lot of folks in the departments throughout the organization, but Kelly's been a lead on this, so I'll let Kelly take this one.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, Kelly Williams, Chief Innovation Officer for the City of Oklahoma City. We are talking about the contract with Deckard for a one-year period. This is for services related to home share compliance and oversight. Through this contract, Deckard will scrape thousands of home share listing platforms to identify all short-term rentals in the Oklahoma City area. They will then compare that to our licensing data to help us identify which home shares like, home share sites are and are not licensed. For those that are not licensed, the contract also supports a letter-based outreach campaign that helps us contact property owners who have unlicensed home shares, providing them with information on how to apply for licensure and voluntarily come into compliance. For those that do not, the software also helps us capture court admissible documentation of the unlicensed home share site, timestamps of the screenshots from the listings to help us move forward with any compliance efforts there. This contract also includes a 24/7 live agent hotline answered in both English and Spanish, as well as an online complaint portal, so that any of our community members who have concerns about home share facilities can 24/7, any day of the year, submit those complaints to a non-emergency number. Staff recommends approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, I just want to say, it's great work, and it was work that we promised residents would come alongside the recent home share ordinance update. I think this is, so thank you, Kelly, and thanks to the city for following through on that. I'll just say, I think this part of the work is going to be critical. I don't know if you all are on this site called Instagram, but I've noticed in my news feed recently that there are cities banning Airbnb, flat out, and not just Airbnb, but just home share. And that would be one thing. Beyond that is the support for it. And the reason why the support for that exists is because of the global housing crisis in which humanity finds itself. So I'm telling you, I mean, I'm not saying like a couple thousand people are clicking like on this, it's tens of thousands of people are clicking like on this. So we really got to get this right, because I can see actually in this crowd right now some people who are, in my mind, responsible home share stewards, who, I mean, literally take care of their properties, they know who's staying there. So I just, we got to get this right, and your role in this part of the process is just critical, that we have a lot of residents who constantly reach out to us about unlicensed Airbnbs, home shares generally. So can we get like a progress update at some point? I don't know when that would be the right time, but I think having this sort of public progress report would probably be really useful in terms of boosting the confidence out there, because I just wanted to state what I'm starting to pick up on is a national mood, global mood.
So Kelly, what's the rollout time right now of like when this would be fully functional and active?
So as soon as we have our kickoff meeting, within about 60 days, we'll have access to the platform and be able to send over our files related to licensed home share and have a sense for who's unlicensed, and actually get that first letter campaign out the door, probably within two to three months.
Yeah, and I think giving it some time to get some traction and get established, but then we can certainly put that on our list to make sure within maybe the first six months or so that we come back with a report on how we're doing. If we have good information before that that we can help to share, we'll make sure that we get that available.
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Great.
Well, thank you all again.
All right, next up is BH, Councilman Cooper.
Yes, man of the hour.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Richard Kelly, I'm the Fire Chief here in Oklahoma City, and just to give a quick update, this is actually, to be able to apply for this grant, this is an opioid abatement grant, which would, the maximum for a city our size could be up to $750,000. And really appreciate the support, and what we're trying to do, obviously in mobile integrated health, is really reach out and deal with the challenges that we see within our city, and opioid, the opioid epidemic is one of those challenges we're seeing. This would allow us to be able to expand some of the services we're providing in that area, really looking at, we already do leave-behind kits with our mobile integrated health, but this allows us to expand those leave-behind kits to add more resources in that. Really, you know, Narcan, naloxone that you hear is the prescribed name, that you see a lot of challenges of that, to be able to bring those that are on an opioid overdose out of that. So those leave-behind kits are very valuable in that area to really save lives, and we want to expand that distribution of that. Other part of that is, you know, partnerships, and that's a big part of what we want to do, is partnering with Key to Home to distribute these kits, so it's really a cooperative agreement to work together to be able to provide those kits. It costs a lot of money to do that, so this will allow us to grow in that area, and then also look at, maybe add in some staff, probably looking more along like a peer support person that would be, now, we already have those peer people that have experienced that, been able to overcome it, because they can speak to those that are going through challenges. So we're looking at that opportunity. So we're really, because it's just the application, we've looked at ways that we could utilize that to benefit the services, you know, to our community, and that's kind of what we're looking at expanding that area. Just to let you know, the application is required to be turned in by June 13th, and we're working very hard in that area. We have MS supporting us in that, which takes a lot to really help us to get across the line, so we appreciate any support we have in that area. Any questions, other questions you might have?
No, I appreciate the clarification, same from ACM Thompson, because the memo just said $750,000, and I wanted to know a bit more, and I really appreciate you walking us through what sounds like a lot of vital aspects that would come with this, so thanks, Chief. And keep us posted.
Thank you. Next up is our scheduled presentation on item BI. This relates to the marketing plan and budget request from our CVB.
Yeah, Zach Craig is here with us from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and Zach's a great partner with us in the community here, and he's going to give us a presentation on their budget and the proposal for FY26.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor. Well, yeah, I feel like it's a very timely presentation today with all that's going on with sports tourism right now and the visitation economy in the city of Oklahoma City. I mean, you all know this, but it's, it's just an incredible time to be here with all the transformation going on. I'm here to present to you the FY26 marketing plan, our scope of work, our budget request. I've got a few slides in partnership with Jane to go through with you this morning. And I want to start with a renewed vision statement and a mission statement for Visit Oklahoma City. We'll start with vision. As we look forward, this is not a place that pleasantly surprised visitors. This is a place of national prominence and global intrigue. Our visitors in the future are going to know about us, and they're going to want to be here, whether it's a convention, a leisure trip, sporting event, an equine show, and whatnot, so you can see that in the new vision. As it relates to mission statement, you know, Visit Oklahoma City, we're really, if you boil it... boil it down, two things. We're brand ambassadors for the community, but we're also demand generators for the community as it relates to bringing travelers here as well. And so, the refined words on the page say it much better than I just did, but I wanted to share that with you all. Kind of speaking to demand generation, I brought this up before, but I wanted to echo what we call community vitality will again. And because of this, it's really important, this is why visitation should be so important to all of us, because it all starts with a visit, everything. And when people visit, and they come here, and they get a great visitor experience, then in the short term, that produces sales tax dollars, that really support municipalities and general funds. But in the long term, there's such a beautiful halo effect that happens as it relates to word of mouth, as it relates to people taking a chance on our community, whether they're a creative, whether they want to start a new business here, retire here, go to college here, the list goes on and on. And that's really the true mission and the work that we do each and every day. You know, as we look at fiscal '26, there's a lot of opportunity to do that, as we welcome, I think, really an incredible slate of marquee events for FY '26. We've got a lot going on in June, obviously, but we've got a lot going on for the next 12 months as well. That'll start in July, that'll start the week after the Fourth of July with Porsche Club of America, where we're going to really welcome car enthusiasts from coast to coast, that'll be right here in Oklahoma City, and you can see that on the list. Several days later, we're going to welcome a habitat conservation group called Delta Waterfowl. That'll be followed by a chemical citywide convention called Norwex, that we're really excited about, too. I think I'm mostly excited, when I look at fiscal '26, at the body of the work that the team has done, is in the latter half of the year. For example, let's fast forward to the month of February, where we welcome Nation's Best Sports. This is a group of independent sports retailers that'll be at the convention center, not only for the month of February, but they'll be with us for August as well. We relocated it from Fort Worth, Texas, they do two conventions a year. And what's even more exciting is not only do they have two conventions on slave for 2026, they have confirmed for 2027, 2028, and 2029 as well. So I'm really excited about that long-term partnership, in partnership with the convention center, in Nation's Best Sports. Let's fast forward to the next month, where we welcome the NCAA March Madness Tournament, first and second rounds, that'll be slated at PECOM Arena, we're excited about that. And I mentioned this group in the past, but it's worth mentioning again, this is the month, it's already a busy month of April for us, but this is Lone Star Volleyball. And this is a group, last time I was here, I told you that we confirmed this for three consecutive weekends. They'll be utilized in the Bennett Center and the Oklahoma City Convention Center. I think from hotel partners, we're up to about 45 hotels that we're working with right now to accommodate 12,000 people each and every weekend, including our traditionally slower Easter weekend as well. So really excited about that, and the economic impact that it's going to spin off next year. So as we go to the next slide, want to dig in with the time I've got left with our marketing plan for this year. We framed it a little bit differently, we used a traditional marketing kind of funnel approach. And I want to start with the next slide with Inspire. Because the hotel tax, as we go to the next slide, this slide, we've been afforded to really reevaluate our brand and do a brand refresh, that's going to happen in fiscal '26, in a more comprehensive way than we've ever done before in the history of Oklahoma City. So I'm really excited about that. I look forward, obviously, to getting your feedback as it relates to that process over the coming months. I think in the short term, something that I want to commend, want to thank the mayor for his time next week, and for really being a partner, as we've re-contracted with a national PR firm called DCI. And I'm thanking the mayor, because he's given some time next week and some, over some forthcoming weeks, to really be our spokesperson with national media as it relates to major business journals, sports journals, leisure publications as well. So look forward to seeing the results on that, Mayor.
Sure. By the way, we settled it up before we made the NBA Finals, so now people are returning our calls even more.
Absolutely. And these are the catalysts, as we look at 2028 in the NBA Finals, you know, we use that as a byproduct to show the community off. So again, just really pleased and grateful for your time. That moves to engage. Engage is when we get a little bit of visceral interest in someone, obviously, we can do that from afar, we do that with technology like Skynav. I've showed you that in the past, but that's a virtual kind of immersion, immersive site inspection experience, to get people kind of a little bit more interested in what we're doing. That also includes going out and meeting face-to-face with people, and I'm grateful for the build-out of our trade show presence as we compete with other aspirational peer set cities. I'm pleased to share with you, in my opinion, we always really outperform them, look just a little bit sharper than some of these other aspirational peer cities that we're competing against. And then, of course, bringing them here, and then showing them an incredible experience once they get here on a site. That leads to convert. A few things I want to mention here, because of the dollars in FY '26, we're contracting right now a new attribution tool for paid media. So it's really going to be able to allow us to optimize and strategically navigate our paid media. We'll have incredible performance reporting, perhaps I could show you that at a later city council meeting, once we get that off the ground. But I'm excited about that, you know, from ad exposure to arrival in the destination, we're really going to see some incredible things from Zartico in that attribution modeling. The next slide is all about numbers, and the great thing about these numbers is they keep going up as they should be. I'm really proud of the team, and the high watermarks that you see up on this screen as it relates to goals for citywide conventions, international tourism, partner referrals from our website, all-time highs, like just for example, convention sales, definite room nights booked, and fiscal '19 was around 80,000. That goal in fiscal '26, you can see it 170. Sports sales FY '19, that goal was around 105,000. You can see that goal this banner year at 190,000 room nights and climbing. And that's due to the community, that's due to the investments that we see, and some of the investments forthcoming as well. And then the final thing that I want to share is cultivate. You know, cultivate has to do a lot with delivering an exceptional brand and visitor experience when people get here. Everything that I've just said over the last five or six minutes means nothing unless people come here and they really feel the warm, genuine welcome of the residents and our community. And so, you know, the idea here is to continue to train our frontline staff, it's to increase our volunteer pool, it's to do some more innovative placemaking that's needed, especially in some of the areas that we need it the most in the City of Oklahoma City. I'll, I'll end on a story, because cultivate, I feel like, is, is, this story will resonate. And part of cultivating is equipping our small businesses as well. We've got a lady in our digital marketing team, her name's Kieran Mahoney, and she is brilliant. And Kieran has been conducting workshops with our districts and our small businesses for some time as it relates to improving their own website, their social media presence, showcasing our digital assets or video assets, and allowing them to use them complimentary. And then also joining us when we pay and bring social media influencers to market to be a part of that itinerary. And so there's a business in the plaza, it's called the Refillery. It's really a cool business, the proprietor, her name is Megan, and Megan took us up on some of these offers. We welcomed an influencer from Houston recently. She went and went to the Refillery and loved it, and promoted it, and better yet, actually became a customer herself. She's a monthly subscriber of that business, and just goes to show you some of the behind-the-scenes work that's going on at Visit Oklahoma City. And again, really proud of Kieran and a job well done. And so with that, so many things to speak about, including the budget, but I'll rest and field any questions that you might have.
Thank you for the presentation. I do have a question.
Yes.
So in my full-time job, I plan and attend a lot of annual meetings throughout the year, in sort of the medical, academic medical field. And one of the things that is a conversation for us right now is cuts at the federal level, sort of dominoing to where, planning for the future as far as meetings, where we're going to go, how many people might be able to attend, is very uncertain. And in particular, one of the meetings I attend annually had a reduction in, of, or yeah, a 40% reduction in call, responses to call for papers, is sort of recognizing that a lot of their staff and faculty will not be able to travel based on cuts to their grants. So I'm just curious to know and understand better, from our perspective locally, if that's a conversation you all are hearing from meeting planners about those domino effects? And maybe it's not an issue for maybe this year's budget, but especially, like I said, kind of that future planning becomes a little more difficult of like, will people be able to send their faculty to meetings? And knowing that's maybe just one industry, not really knowing if it's sort of across the board in other areas that might be experiencing like federal restructuring or cuts, and just curious if that's a conversation for you all right now, and kind of what that might mean for sort of the meeting economy, being able to come to Oklahoma City in the future.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman. It's been a major discussion year-to-date, as we engage, first of all, when we do this budget process, it goes through kind of many channels. But it starts with our local general managers. I mean, we want to know specifically, or attraction partners, or general managers, people that have boots on the ground, what's going inside their building, how are they forecasting, what are they seeing on a day-to-day basis that we perhaps are not seeing? And so there's sensitivity to any association, corporation around, or that has, has to be fueled by a government contract. Much like in a lot of the gateway cities right now, international tourism has been very sensitive as well. So we continue to monitor both of those things. And I think, as we worked in partnership with Chris York, the Budget Director, this was a big topic, as we looked at our contracted amount, and still trying to say it as somewhat conservative amount for fiscal '26. I'll tell you something really great about the City of Oklahoma City, I've mentioned before, we're very diversified. So our mix, our portfolio, if you think of a financial portfolio, we've got an incredible mix. When you think about sports economy, equine and livestock, conventions, or emerging leisure traffic, you think about new supply and results coming from Okana. So that really helps us weather storms, but it's something we're still monitoring on a monthly basis.
Okay, thank you. I just, like I said, this is a little bit of a newer conversation to me, working in this space. And so it, it kind of, it's, since it's been such a large conversation, and recognizing how much we interact with CVBs and hotels to book space and, and room nights, just, I think it, it speaks to the connection and recognizing that like, what's having, happening at a different governmental level does have some domino effects that could affect our, you know, these spaces that we're interacting with. So I just really appreciate that. And if there's any updates, or as that continues, please let us know if there's any advocacy we can be doing to kind of support those folks still being able to come to the city.
Okay, we'll do. Thank you, Councilwoman.
You know, the one thing I wanted to say, Zach, is you mentioned sports tourism, and we look back 25 years ago, and you think about Oklahoma City and sports tourism, and there wasn't much to do. And so, last night when I was looking at all this, I printed out, just off of Velocity Sports, OKC Velocity Sports, what's going on this week in Oklahoma City? And we have the Women's College World Series, we have two Thunder NBA final games, we have bike tours, we have the Oklahoma City Comets playing, and we have, what I think is going to be a really cool event, is Learn the Road Day out at River Sports. And so there's a lot going on, and I just want to make sure people are plugging into this and not missing opportunities that exist with our sports tourism. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Council, Councilman. You know, I'm excited about the future. We, we tend to focus on this new arena, which is going to be magical for a primary tenant, but we focus on secondary and tertiary tenants, and demand generators in between seasons. You think about the new multipurpose stadium, MAPS IV, and how that's going to be transformational. But you also think about the Cameron Parkerville, and you think about youth and amateur sports, and what that does for our community or youth, health and wellness. It's really powerful, and yes, Councilman, things have changed greatly over the past couple decades. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach, appreciate it. Thank you for the partnership.
Thank you all. All right, well now we're in a position where we can adopt a consent docket. We have items A through CI. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item 10, the concurrence docket, we have items A through K, we can take with Got a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item 11, items for individual consideration. Item 11A is an ordinance on final hearing, it was recommended for approval, rezoning 3716 Cromwell, from C3 to R1. Councilman Cooper, no one has signed up to speak.
Thanks, Mayor. Is, is the applicant here, though? Is Brandon here? Why don't you come on up?
I'm Brandon with Elevation Homes. We're just looking to see if we can get this lot rezoned in order to have access to the property that we're going to be building.
Would you tell us a little bit more about why, what's going on there?
They're just, they're, they're actually, our client is wanting to build just to the, I guess it would be just to the east of the property, and there is no access other than through the bike trail. So we're looking to have access through Cromwell in order to, for him to build access to his property.
Well, and I just want to say, thank you for reaching out to me really early in the process. I mean, like, back during the Planning Commission, maybe even pre-Planning Commission, if memory serves, and I just appreciate that level of engagement. Initially, in the memo, councilmembers, there were three protests, 3%, I'm sorry, three legal, 9%, but I received from the city clerk this morning that, as of this morning, zero protests. So I just wanted to give you all that update. I didn't know if you all had any questions about that. Okay, otherwise I would move for approval.
Motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 11B is an ordinance on final hearing, it was recommended for approval, rezoning 7690 North Central, from R1 to I2. Councilman Pennington, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if, Pat, if you want to give any comments about, about, tell us about the case quickly.
Just if we are final place, we could get a new volleyball arena set over there, off the Central Avenue there in Wilshire.
Awesome. And this is, just to let everyone know, this area is trending industrial in general in this area, and I know we have a companion item that's the area right next to it, where there's development coming in. So strongly in support, it's consistent with where things are trending, and so with that I move approval.
We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11C is an ordinance on final hearing, it was recommended for approval, rezoning 7722 North Central, from R1 to I2. Back to you, Councilman Pennington.
Thank you. This is right next door to the property we just rezoned, so I think this is just making things consistent throughout both properties. So with that, I move approval. So with that, I move approval.
Have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. Item D was previously deferred, which brings us to item E. This is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, rezoning 7303 South Anderson from PUD 1794 and AE2 to PUD 2060 and AE2. This was deferred from May 20. Councilman Stone, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and move for its approval.
Have a motion in a second. Councilman Stone, sign if you're voted. Passes unanimously. Item F was previously deferred, which brings us to item G. This is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, rezoning 11100 North Kelly from SPUD 902 to SPUD 1723. Councilman Pennington, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you. This is taking an existing indoor soccer facility and just expanding the uses to include some warehouse uses. No protests, even though there are some homes nearby and some other businesses, but we received no protests, and I move approval.
We have a motion in a second on item G. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11H is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, establishing a special permit to operate use unit 8300.33 Drinking Establishment in the C3 District found at 13801 Northwestern. Councilman Stone, sign if you're voting. No one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm not aware of any protests. No one signed up to speak, so I'll move for the approval at this time.
Have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item I is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, establishing a special permit to operate use unit 8300.33 Drinking Establishment in the C4 Commercial District at 2120 Northwest 39th. Councilman Cooper, no one has signed up to speak.
Yes, but is the applicant or their representative here by any chance? Would you mind? It's a bit of a unique item. There both is and it isn't. So if you might, wouldn't mind telling us a little bit about what you're wanting to do there, that'd be helpful, please. And introduce yourself, of course.
I'm Randy Malone. I'm an attorney. I represent the applicant and, answer the question.
Floor is yours.
It's going to be a nightclub.
All right, what we're trying to do is have a nightclub. We're trying to have a space safe for people to come and drink, hang out, get a few cocktails, have a place to enjoy. We're going to try to do sporting, sporting events in the afternoon. We got some TVs hung up. We've renovated the building, so we're just trying to have a safe place for people to hang out on the strip.
Mm-hmm.
The traditional use of this-
Oh, if you want to come to the microphone, please.
The traditional use of this space has been a nightclub for a long time.
Right, yeah. Well, and that's what I mean by it's a little unique, but it's also not. So I've, you know, many years, I'm 43 now, so I'm 21 onward, I've definitely visited this spot in various forms, and I'm a big fan of, for instance, the patio space behind there. But I was confused why if some, if a bar has existed there previously, why one would have to come there again? And so I just wanted to let the reason, let known publicly why, and it's because the last alcohol license at this property expired in 2023, and so the non-conforming status has ceased. So a special permit is required to reestablish the use as a bar. So that, I just wanted to make sure everyone understood, because, you know, this, this particular space is one that's known to the residents of OKC. So I think they would probably have a question of, wait, if it's already been a bar, why are we having to go through this? So I just wanted to make sure that was, something stated for the public record, and I'll wish you well and move for approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second on item I. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item J is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for denial, rezoning 2821 Northwest 57th from C1, SPUD 1675. This is deferred from May 20. Councilman Cooper, no one has signed up to speak.
Yes, Rachel, if you wouldn't mind coming back up, and then I spoke with our municipal council, would you remind everyone again what the situation is here for you?
Yeah, my name is Rachel Burtie. I have City Pause Urgent Care. We're an after-hours clinic for small animals. Two and a half years ago, we put in a CT trailer to better be able to care for our patients. Did so, I called the city, thought it was okay to place it there. Neighbors were fine with it about a year and a half in. One of the neighbors complained. So I went through the process of what I need to do. I was told I had to rezone it, gone through that process, realizing that the neighbor is never going to be happy with the trailer being there. So I'm in the process of building a new location. It's just taken time to get it there. And so I'm asking to have this deferred until the end of summer, at which point my new location should be up and running, and I can move the CT trailer. This is just the only way I could have the trailer until I could get that new facility open.
And would you just remind us one more time, this trailer, what sort of services it provides the patients?
So it has a CT, CT machine in it, so that's what we use for advanced imaging, for emergency services in particular for, it's commonly used for dachshunds that go down on their back and they need emergency back surgery. We use it to look for cancers that are hard to identify, sometimes trauma. If we can't identify injuries externally, we can use that. And there's not many of them available in the city, so having it is really important to be able to take care of our patients.
Yeah. And as I noted previously to you and to council, you know, my cat, the honorable first cat of Ward 2, unfortunately passed away at the beginning of the year when she got sick suddenly. We were looking for a place to go, and we Googled and we found you. And it was, even though we lost Marion, we still had you all there, and I am really grateful for the service that you all provide. And so I spoke with, just knowing what you had walked me through on the phone, I spoke with municipal council, and what they recommended is that, and I'm going to make this, this motion, but I'd like to vote to move to defer to the first meeting in September.
May September 9?
Thank you, city clerk. To allow the applicant additional time to locate to this other property you've identified, so you can get that mobile vet unit moved. In terms of a justification, again, and Ms. Counselor said if I wanted to offer one, but I do want to offer one, which is that, you know, this, this would require, if we, if we say no, this is an immediate removal, it's going to require the shutdown of this mobile vet clinic, and that will in fact cause a great hardship for the veterinarians involved, the patients they treat, and for the owners of those patients. And that is my concern. As someone who knocked doors in this area three times over now, I can tell you that our, our pet ones are our loved ones that people care a lot about. And so we're just going, I'd like to just get us through the end of the summer, and I'd ask council to join me in that.
Thank you.
You'd say September 9, city clerk? That would be my request for your consideration, council members.
All right, we can bring that up electronically for a motion to defer this item to September 9. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item K1 is a public hearing regarding the Capitol Hill Business Improvement District. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we can advance to the resolution, adopting and confirming an assessment role for year 25, 20, 25, 26, for the Capitol Hill Business Improvement District, founded K2. We'll have a companion item at L. There's no presentation, this is something we do pretty routinely, as you know. We could take a motion there in a second, if that's the council's desire. And we have one, and so cast your votes on K2. Passes unanimously. That brings us to item L, which is the ordinance on final hearing, adopting and setting the assessment role for the Capitol Hill Business Improvement District. Have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item M is an ordinance on final hearing relating to a general schedule of fees. There was a presentation previously, this updates a variety of fees for our city. We do have some residents who have signed up to speak on this item, and so I think we'll probably begin there. And so I would, we have quite a few. So I would say, what I'll do is, I'll state your name, I'll also state the name of the person who would speak after, in hopes that that person will maybe make their way down and be ready to go. Please, when you do come to the microphone, state your name and address, and limit your remarks to no more than three minutes. The clerk will give you a verbal warning at 30 seconds. All right, first up is Libby Ross, who will be followed by Lynn Smith.
Good day, council, mayor, manager. I'm Libby Ross. I live at 8500 Benny Bruce Street in Norman, Oklahoma. I am the state community volunteer leader for Airbnb across the state, and a co-host for short-term rentals across Oklahoma City as well. I'm here to advocate for fair and sustainable permitting system that works for the city and for responsible host. It's important to know who's actually hosting Airbnb in Oklahoma City. 47% of the hosts are using their income to afford basic necessities. 55% of those are women, 11% of those are retired individuals. Currently, STR operators in Oklahoma City must reapply for permits every one to three years. Now the city is proposing to raise the permit fee from $300 to $1,100, a significant financial burden that is not required from other home-based businesses or other applicants going before the BOA. I hear the city compares short-term rentals to home daycares, but the treatment isn't equal. Home daycares receive lifetime permits after their approval. Home shares, we repeat the process every three years, and we pay taxes on every booking, month after month. I know a host who operated without a permit for two years. Their punishment, $188 fine. This system, it penalizes responsible behavior, or irresponsible behavior. Meanwhile, those who are trying to be responsible and do the right thing, we pay hundreds of dollars and we spend hours of our time to stay compliant. To better understand our impact as host, I asked Airbnb to provide me with some numbers. Airbnb's actively supported over 9,000 jobs across Oklahoma, and I believe that. My company alone supports 20 people full-time in the Oklahoma City metro. Guests spend about $180 a day in the neighborhoods in which they stay. We actually fill real gaps. We house infrastructure crews here to build so that we can grow, film professionals who seek privacy. We also host a lot of families traveling for funerals or medical care, they just need a soft place to land. And I personally host a lot of children with autism who need a quiet, stable environment that feels less institutionalized. We provide what hotels cannot. The big picture, short-term rentals helped cultivate over $669 million in economic impact across Oklahoma last year. That is huge to our economy. Today, I believe there are just under 1,900 active short-term rentals in Oklahoma City, generating an estimated over $4 million per year in hotel tax revenues alone. I ask this council to reconsider the permit hike and the reoccurring burden, create a clear, long-term path for compliance, just like others that are going before the BA. I think together, we should support those who are doing it right. Thank you.
Lynn Smith, followed by Julissa Valdez.
Good morning. My name is Lynn Smith, and I'm a small business owner and a licensed short-term rental host here in Oklahoma City. I live and host in Ward 2. I'm also concerned about the proposed 267% increase in the Board of Adjustment fees for home shares. Most of us, like me, are just small business owners. And nationwide, the majority of hosts host less than three properties. When we started our short-term rental journey in 2020, of course, it was for our long-term retirement plan, but what we didn't expect was the reciprocity we would receive from our guests. So a few examples of some of our favorite stays and our favorite guests. We had a couple in our neighborhood who's home flooded from a broken pipe. They had six dogs and needed a place to stay. No hotel would take them, but we could. We also hosted an Oklahoma legislator who was recovering from surgery at a nearby hospital. She stayed with us over the Christmas holiday with her furry furball friend. And a family driving to MD Anderson Cancer Center for their child's medical treatment. They needed a quiet, home-like place to stay after a long day on the road. These aren't just bookings, these are human moments. And hosting is about people, not profits. So let me be clear, I'm not against paying fair fees. I know there's time, resources involved in bringing the board together to execute its mission. But a fee hike from $300 to $1,100 every three years, which has just been limited by the recent short-term rental ordinance update, is going to hit our bottom line. It's going to force us to delay improvements to our property and to pull back on the contributions we make to our neighborhoods. I would urge the city to reconsider this steep increase, or create a tiered structure, or a modest adjustment that would give responsible hosts a chance to plan and continue to offer meaningful, safe, and supportive spaces for people during life's biggest moments. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Julissa Valdez, followed by Patricia Eiling.
Good morning. Sorry, I'm not very prepared, but my name is Julissa Valdez, address 2609 Northwest 31st Street. I have been a host with Airbnb for going on four years. Kind of like the last two ladies had, I think, explained it very well. You know, my main thing is just to urge to reconsider the fees, maybe give it some more time. Can we come up with a better resolution to help, you know, us as hosts? I'm an independent business person as well, only have one Airbnb. I do it because I love hosting. I love seeing new people from out of state, other state, you know, helping them, giving back to the community, you know, letting them know about things that are happening in the city versus a hotel that wouldn't be able to tell them, you know, especially families. They come in with a budget, helping them, you know, find different things to do with the family that normally people wouldn't know about. And really just, you know, thank you, I wanted to say, James, for the other statement, the other lady that came up that was having a system about getting more people into compliance. That's something we want to do, you know, from the beginning. We have been, you know, trying to do everything right, and it just, it feels like it's a blow to us, you know, increasing fees for the people that are really trying to do the right thing. So just my statements, you know, please just give us more time, see if we can come up with a better system, statement for the fees. Thank you.
Would you remind us where you reside in the city?
I'm sorry?
Would you remind us where you reside in the city?
Address is 20, the, my address is 2609 Northwest 31st, and my Airbnb is actually 2608 Northwest 31st Street. It's right across, right across the way. And, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Eiling, followed by-
It's Eiling.
Eiling, followed by Melinda Irwin.
Good morning. My name is Patricia Eiling. I live at 2627 Northwest 55th Terrace, and I'm a gal that likes a microphone, but I'll be brief. So I think to sum up what, what we're saying here as, as property owners and, and home share host, what we're really asking you to look at is, just for this to be fair and equitable, everybody understands there needs to be an increase, and the increase from 300 to 1,100, although it's staggering, could, could very well be absorbed, except for that, we pay that every one, two, or three years. And it's at the whim of the, of the adjustments board, whether you get a one-year, or whether you get a two-year, or whether you get a three-year, and that could be different every year that you apply. And so that's vastly different than most other businesses that are, that are needing an exception. And so what we're asking is for this to be a fair and equitable increase for all businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Melinda Irwin, followed by Jay Galegley.
Excuse me. Hi, I'm Melinda Irwin, and I am a long-term, messed apart, and Heritage Hills resident and 12-year Airbnb super host. Many of you may remember me from when we passed the original ordinance seven years ago, because that was a big time for us. This fee increase doesn't impact my three Airbnbs, because I'm grandfathered under the original ordinance. It would impact any future Airbnb- It would impact any future Airbnbs I choose to add. I started hosting in my garage apartment in 2012 to help cover increasing taxes, insurance, and property maintenance costs on my home of almost 30 years. We were literally being priced out of our own neighborhood and the place I've called home since 1992. I'm here because I think this increase is unfair and not comparable to other small businesses. This fee increase is, makes it difficult for any future host to enter the market. Most are only given a one-year special exception permit and then $110 business license fee on top of that. Profit margins are very slim in the Oklahoma City market due to all the unlicensed operators. There are few, if any, in the cities that, other cities in the U.S. that I can find that have this double, like you have to go get a special exception permit that frequently. I requested a bunch of information from the city, like on the number of Airbnbs that are currently licensed, the number that require Board of Adjustment approval, and I haven't got any of that. I got some spreadsheets, but didn't give me the thing I asked for. I think it's a huge burden on small businesses. And I also, if it takes staff that long to do it the first time that a host applies, but it shouldn't take as long the second and third and fourth, I don't know why. It would always be 1,100, maybe, you know, a higher fee, and then as it's a renewal, make it last. I just think there has to be a better solution to this huge fee increase. I feel like if it passes, it's going to urge people to try to go unlicensed, because they just can't afford all the time and effort it takes to get the special exception. I would urge all of you as a council to defer this vote until you have data that supports the decision. Thank you.
Jay Gallegly, followed by Pedro De Paz.
Hello, Jay Gallegly. I'm kind of new to this topic, so I apologize if I'm trying to catch up here. I learned about it last night. I appreciate your comments earlier when she was giving the presentation. So I operate several Airbnbs throughout Oklahoma City. I've got several licenses at this point for all of them. It feels like this rate increase is a little bit punishing the wrong people. I feel like I've done everything in my power and doing it the right way, and it feels like the rate increase is just punishing people like me that are doing the right thing. I would urge you to consider raising the enforcement fines, perhaps, instead of punishing the people that are doing the right thing, try to go after the people that are operating illegally. I've always tried to operate my properties as a business. In doing so, I have noise monitors at all of my properties. My neighbors are very happy. They all have my contact information. I'm trying to raise the bar for Airbnb, like your point was, you know, people are trying to shut down Airbnbs. I'm trying to do it the right way. I'm trying to make, you know, it a business and keep my neighbors happy. And I feel like this rate increase is a little bit unjustified towards the wrong people. My second point that I'd like you to consider is, during the presentation, she talked about the software that I believe is $212,000. Is there any proof that it actually works? She mentioned that they're scraping data from the internet, which I know Airbnb doesn't provide a whole lot of public information on the internet besides pictures. So do we, A, know that it works, and I would, I would actually also, you know, volunteer my time if I'm able to help in any way with the enforcement part. I've reported several people myself, just through different processes, I've been able to identify certain individuals operating illegally. So if there's any way for me to help personally, I would be happy to do that. But again, my main opposition for this is just that, go after the people that are doing it illegally and not people that are trying to get their licenses. So that's all I have.
Can I ask, I'm sorry, I know you said you were new to this, just your address and anyone else who speaks, because I think that's going to be an important aspect of Airbnb.
Yeah, so my home address is 1309 Glenbrook Terrace, but I have, like I said, several properties throughout Oklahoma City in different areas.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Pedro De Paz, followed by Rob Littlefield. Rob Littlefield.
I live at 1148 Northwest 56th Street. I'm very grateful to be standing here for all of you today. I have three Airbnbs that I've been operating for the past 10 years. They're grandfathered. I don't have a stake in this decision here today, because I have no intentions of getting any more Airbnbs. But I'm considering my colleagues in this kind of work. Where I have an issue is a perception issue. I worked diligently back in 28, 2019, when the City Council of Oklahoma City decided to invite home sharing into our community. That decision was made with conditions that were reasonable conditions, and it gave the message that we welcome home sharing in our city. So, so what has happened, and what I've observed since then, is a Board of Adjustments in our city that is overwhelmed with these applications for home sharing. I've actually heard people on the Board of Adjustments say that they're overwhelmed by that. I've heard past municipal assistant city managers make the comment that they're looking for a way to lower the, lower the task of listening to so many applications, kind of figuring out a way how to maybe turn more down or something like that, you know, like lessening their load. So my problem for my colleagues moving forward in the future in home sharing and the City of Oklahoma City is the perception that this fee is putting upon the people that want to do this. It seems to me like, like doing this kind of a fee increase is, is a tactic to get less people to come before the Board of Adjustments to get a special exception permit. It's, it, that's a perception that I'm seeing could be a possibility, and I think that that's extremely unfair. The other thing that, that I thought I had learned were
Thirty seconds remaining.
That people pay in our city to accomplish SPODs, PUDs, licensing, all of those sorts of things. That fee is determined to cover the cost of city staff to produce that item to get on an agenda before whatever board. It's a fee designed to cover the cost of developing that staff report. It's not designed to make a profit. It's not designed to punish anybody. It's designed to cover the cost. So for, for me, back whenever this was, you know, if I had to do a $300 fee to apply for a special exception permit before the Board of Adjustments, if it's $100 an hour, that's three hours.
Thanks, Rob. We're at time.
Okay. I'm done. I think you get my point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes the citizens who've signed up to speak on this item.
Mayor, may I make a couple of comments? I got somewhat of a frantic phone call this morning from Gary Jones, who's with the Oklahoma Metropolitan Association of Realtors. Gary and his organization have always been really helpful to me when they've had, when I've had housing issues in my ward. They've been a wonderful source of research and materials, and the one thing that he asked was, some of their members have requested some information from the city that they have not received yet. He had two specific questions he'd like to visit with staff about, and so I think just to be fair to the entire process, I'd like to defer this for two weeks, so some of the association's questions can be answered and materials be provided to the association that they've requested. So at this time, I'm going to move for a deferral, if that's okay with you, Mayor.
Sure.
Councilman, can I ask, would it, could it make sense to maybe even defer it a month, just knowing timing-wise and like how much, like, because I also would like to be involved in some meetings and conversations, and just knowing scheduling can be difficult. It feels like maybe a month would be helpful to get all that information collected.
I'd like to leave it at two weeks, just because this is a funding source for us that's going to play into our next budget, the budget that we're about to approve. If we do need additional time, I'm all for doing that, but, but let's try to limit it to two weeks, get Gary's association's questions answered, and see if we can move this process forward with either a tiered system or something else. Thank you.
Well, let me also just add, though, and if we're going to do this in a two-week time period, councilman, councilwoman, the folk who signed up to speak, you know, including my own Ward 2 traffic commissioner, I would love for them to join you all at the planning to get a little bit of input about where we should be heading, whether it's a tiered system or what have you. You know, the, though Mesta Park's not Ward 2, right across the street, and that story really resonated with me, you know, as I'm looking at, you know, this Ludwig Institute report that says the bottom 60% of our people right now cannot even really afford the basic quality of life, right? And, you know, really, one needs to make around $67,000 a year to even have a shot at that, at quality of life. And so hearing you talk about the Airbnb becoming that way to, you almost got priced out of your neighborhood, right? Some, a place you've lived since 1992, and that's the stuff, that is literally the stuff that keeps me up at night. And when I wake up, I'm thinking about it, and I, I'm terrified of that. So I, on the one hand, and that's when you all sit and talk, I think where I would ask, the challenge I would put to you is, how can we put in place a fee structure that allows you all to, you know, have these sort of businesses? But I think my challenge back is that there is a housing crisis at the same time, and I really worry about this depleting housing stock being used for Airbnb when we have people in need of a place to live. So I would love to hear, that's just a challenge, like what is your response to that and how, you know, I know the city's going to have a bit of a bigger response when we talk about in the bond, building affordable housing. So I think I'm not putting it all on you all, but I just think that that needs to be part of an honest conversation right now. But I'd like to hear you all meet with, with planning staff, just like we've done before when there's moments where residents have asked us to, you know, kind of hear them out on whatever to a city manager. I don't need to be involved in those. I'll trust my traffic commissioner and my Ward 2 people, so.
So I've got a motion to defer it for two weeks to June 17th, please.
Electronically. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes on the deferral of item M to June 17th. Passes unanimously. Okay, now we're on item N. This is an ordinance to be introduced and set for final hearing on June 17th, amending our municipal code relating to roofing permits and contractors, and I believe there's a presentation.
Yes, Brock Rowe, our Development Service Director, will present this item.
Good morning, Council, Mayor. We're here to present to you the, a new re-roof permit for the City of Oklahoma City. Go ahead and go to the next slide, Tony. So I wanted to bring this to you because it's important, and that's the why. That's what we're talking about first, is the why, why are we doing this? Go back, go ahead, back, Tony. I'm going to talk about these pictures real quick. So these pictures represent different kinds of contractors, well, actually just one, really, in this picture, these two pictures. But there are, there are several different contractors, roofing contractors out there in our city. You have the really good ones that go above and beyond, that make sure everything's taken care of. You have the ones that do just the bare minimum, but they still give you a good roof. And then you have the contractors who are the, you can't see it from my house. These pictures represent the last group, the, you can't see it from my house. That first picture there, you see that house roof, it has about five or six layers of shingles on it. And then that second picture is someone decided to go ahead and put some sheathing over existing shingles and then put a new roof on it, which then that roof needed to be repaired. Now, these pictures are not exclusively to Oklahoma City. These are pictures I found over the years of working in the trades, but what they do represent is negligence and inadequate application of roofing material. Why that's important, the layers of shingles on a roof, is because of structural issues. Roofs are designed to only hold a certain amount of weight. If you think about, I don't know, have you guys ever picked up a bundle of shingles, maybe at Home Depot or something, about 80 pounds? And it takes about three of those pounds, three of those shingles to make about a 10-foot by 10-foot section of your roof. So you're looking at about 240 pounds, and if you add more weight to that, extra layers, you start, ended up with, you know, 200, 500, 600, 700 pounds in that specific 10-foot area. And the roof isn't really designed to hold that. So I wanted to bring the why to you. So one thing I want to also point out to you is that we've already actually adopted the code for this, when we adopted the 2018 residential code. It's actually Section R 908, and there's kind of, I'm going to kind of give you a little bit of an overview of that. So that, so what it does is, just basically for residential, that is the residential code, the IRC, and it covers the replacement of existing roofs. So this isn't going to come in, this isn't going to be an issue with new construction where the roofs are being put on during the initial construction of the building. This is actually, you know, five, 10, 15 years later, after a major hailstorm, things like that, that this would affect, you would have to get a permit for that application. The Oklahoma State Code has actually modified the 2018 IRC 908 a little bit more. Originally, if you read the IRC now, it says that you can have two layers of shingles on your roof, but Oklahoma state law has amended that down to only one layer. So it's really important that we are able to verify that application, making sure that those are taken care of. There's also some other code language there that you can see that, you know, just making sure that you have positive drainage on your roofs. Some things are exempt on that, and then making sure that if you have combustible wood roof, shingles, like shakes and things like that, that you are protecting those from fire. Go ahead and move to the next slide. So the re-roof permit, it's going to be very easy to apply for. We're going to make it where it's super simple. You're going to apply online or with your smartphone, your tablet, or computer, or you can visit our development center as well, in person, and if you prefer that face-to-face service. The permits will be typically issued day, the same day you apply for them, even maybe the morning of, if it's, if you go through a digital source, and the cost will be $90. So our inspection overview is kind of important, just to understand what we're going to be doing. We're going to be doing a visual inspection from the ground. Our inspectors won't be climbing on the roof and climbing around it, just for safety reasons. But then visual inspection will look for abnormalities in the, how they apply the shingles, making sure there's no more than one or two layer, one layer of shingles on the roof. If there's any of the structural sheathing that's been replaced, we're going to require the contractor to actually take a photo of it. All of our inspectors have smartphones, so they can receive pictures on it, just to make sure that things are replaced. A lot of times when you have re-roofs, you will have moisture that builds up underneath the shingle, and you'll have some rot around the eaves and the edges and things like that. So we want to make sure that that's all replaced correctly. If it's a, if it's a major, if you have major damage, it will require a building permit to replace all the sheathing, but just for the re-roof, it's a small percentage that you can replace. We're just going to check for also the venting on the roof, to make sure that it's been applied correctly, looking to make sure that gas ventilation, that stacks that come out of the roof are, are still there, that, that hasn't been removed, and just protecting our citizens from, from any of those issues. So that's kind of our inspection overview. I think that's all I have for you. Go ahead in the next slide. Yeah, just questions about it, if you have any.
How are we going to do follow-through with this?
Do follow-through with it?
Yeah, I mean, we have a hard time with inspections as it is right now. I mean, adding something to this nature, especially when we have our hailstorms and there's many roofs that get done daily, how are we going to have follow-through?
So what we've, what we've figured out is that the inspection takes about maybe 30 minutes to walk around our residence. We have, this will be our building inspectors, our electrical inspectors, our mechanical inspectors, all of them can do this inspection, as well as code enforcement inspectors that work in code enforcement if we need in a, in a crisis like that, in that, in type of situation where there's this major hailstorm, where we have of situation where there's this major hailstorm, where we have 80,000 properties being done. But this will be just basically like our regular permitting system, and we will be bringing in, you know, it'll go through our seller program, and they'll request an inspection through that way.
Okay, so on the building permit aspect, if like they're having to redeck the roof, how long do you expect that building permit to take to get?
Yeah, with the, that will be through the same process that we do with a building permit. Those, those situations, we will take those as they come, and if it's a, we don't want to leave anybody's roof open to where they have to have, you know.
That's my concern.
Yeah, we will, we will make sure that we can expedite that and get that taken care of. With something like that, that should be a one-day permit approval as well, immediately. If they open up the roof and they tear off the shingles and they realize that they got to replace a lot more decking, we can, we can take care of that.
And there'll be an expedited service for that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
How are you going to enforce this?
How are you going to enforce it?
Yeah, what keeps just a roofer from going and putting a roof on takes a day, and then you don't know, and so is there a penalty, a fine, is there?
Well, it'd be the same penalty and fines we have with working without a permit, that we currently have with any of our permits. Even with those, anytime someone does a remodel on their house, or they, you know, they do any kind of construction, you know, it's a, a lot of times it's catch me if you can, I hate to say that, but you know, with the vast land that we have in the city, it's, it's word of mouth, people complaining, it's our inspectors driving around, seeing things, catching things. And with this, we have, you know, a multitude of code enforcement inspectors too, who can say, hey, you need to get a permit. And so, I mean, we'll give people grace, because this is something new that's coming along, but it's, it's important that they get their permit, so that we can do those, those inspections on it.
Do you know what the fine will be if they don't get the permit?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but it should be the same as what we already approved as our working without a permit fee.
So the permit's 50 bucks, right?
The permit's $90.
$90, excuse me?
Yep.
Okay.
So just to be clear on the inspections, it's a single post-installation inspection? Is that right?
Yeah, it'd be a single, it'll be a single inspection when it's, when it's completed.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brock.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, we can take a motion to introduce the item, setting it for final hearing on June 17th. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item O1 is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed, except for one previously struck. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we'll advance to the resolution at O2, declaring that structures are dilapidated. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11P1 is a public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed, except for those previously struck. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, and so we'll advance to the resolution found at P2, declaring that structures are unsecured. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11Q1 is a public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for those previously struck. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we'll advance to the resolution found at Q2, declaring that the buildings are abandoned. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, 11R1 is a public hearing regarding a resolution adopting an amendment to the fiscal year 2025 budget. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we'll advance to the resolution at R2, adopting said amendment to the fiscal year 2025 budget. This relates to emergency management, fire, utilities.
Yes, Chris York. Yeah, on this one, this is the first one, this is the second hearing that we already presented on this one, yeah, I'm sorry.
This is the second of two meetings on this, so you've heard about this already. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then 11S is the second public hearing regarding, 11S1 is the second public hearing regarding a resolution amending the June 18th, 2024 resolution regarding fire expenditures. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak under this public hearing?
No, they haven't.
If not, and so we'll advance to the resolution found at S2, amending the June 18th, 2024 resolution regarding certain fire expenditures. Again, second meeting for this topic. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we have arrived finally at the budget. Let's talk about that in a second, yeah, maybe, maybe at the end. Okay, sorry. We are now at the budget. There is a public hearing regarding adoption of the fiscal year 2026 annual budget, and we do have someone who has signed up to speak, Aurelius Francisco. Sorry, we're on the public hearing first.
Sorry.
Aurelius Francisco.
Good morning, Council. My name's Aurelius Francisco, East Side Ward Seven. I'm here once again, I'll keep my remarks brief, as an organizer here in Oklahoma City, with home base and the participatory budget push. I'm also a researcher, a student, and an educator in the community, and I come to you all with the continued ask to change the budget process here in the city, and also to change our priorities. Our budget is indicative of our priorities as a city, and what our city has shown, we prioritize is policing over actual safety for our community. As a part of the People's Budget Coalition, what we have worked to do is to engage residents across each of the wards, not just in my ward of Ward Seven, but in each of the wards, to talk to residents about what they need within the community. So many of those folks aren't here today for various reasons, it's an 8:30 on a Tuesday morning, right? Folks got work, got kids, it's summertime. And so one potential change could be to the meeting time, right, of these hearings, and then also to make sure that the accessibility of the forums and the feedback that we are acquiring from residents is as accessible as possible. And again, offer to you all, as I did last year, the support of community organizations like mine, to help you all acquire some of that feedback. I would also say, I know that we are looking at a budget shortfall this year, and some departments are having to cut more than others, and my call to you all is to prioritize violence prevention and to think about visionary solutions for violence and harm in our communities that aren't reactive. And the police react to crime, they react to harm, right? And so violence prevention really is about the assets and the solutions that are community-based in our city. We have so many amazing things happening. Two days from now, the finals are coming, we've talked about all these are great, great events. Maoma Marta OU just lost in the softball World Series, but it's still here, we're making a lot of money from it, right? These are amazing, amazing things, and I also want us to consider the least of these, the people in our community who often get looked over, who we don't think about, the marginalized folks, the homeless folks, right? We're looking at a planning budget, majority of which for homelessness, homelessness support comes from federal grants, which is rather precarious right now, right? And so I want us to be thinking about how we are going to continue to ensure that our funding priorities.
30 seconds remaining.
Are centering, thank you, are centering the least and most vulnerable people in our communities, and not just Oklahoma City Thunder. And I'm the biggest sports fan in the city, you can ask Joe Beth. Appreciate y'all's time, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our public hearing at T1, and now we're at T2, the resolution adopting the fiscal year 2026 annual budget, and I think we are looking for maybe a quick recap of the last few months.
That's exactly right. Yeah, Chris York, our budget director, will give us a quick recap on the budget.
Yeah, good morning, Mayor and Council. Again, just a quick overview to button up the process a little bit. I want to start off by, again, thanking the staff members that were involved in this process. It's a long journey getting us here. And then also, as the gentleman said, it's a cut year, and so I think it's impossible to get a budget we would all think was perfect in our own minds in an add year, much less in a cut year. It's certainly going to be a compilation of compromises, and that's what you have here today, but I'm still very proud of all the work that was put into it. So just a quick recap of where it got us here. So we opened up with Council receiving the proposed budget April 29th, and that's when we started our comment period. Several departments presented over the next few meetings, and then you received your initial batch of comments that contained 19 items from residents on May the 27th. We continued to compile those for you and sent you the next batch yesterday, and in that, there were an additional 12 comments. If I had to summarize those for you, I'd say that they were focused on investing in infrastructure, parks, transit. There were several comments requesting that the police department budget be reprioritized into alternative public safety programs, similar to the comment that we just heard earlier, and then the other priorities that I just listed. We also captured 18 comments from, that were received live during our public hearings, and that is also in the packet that you received. So that brings us to today. This is the chart that we presented back on the 29th, and it is still good. There has been some conversation about changes based on feedback from Council, as well as our residents, but those things were able to be accomplished administratively, and so there is no change in the figures that you're seeing here from what you saw earlier. I'll just go back through them very quickly, starting with the general fund. We do have a slight contraction there in the general fund, being down about a half percent, or $611 million. That's what prompted us to have to request the four and a half percent cuts in most cases, for most general fund-supported departments, and about a one and a half percent cut for our public safety departments. Other operating funds, which starts pulling in things like our airports and utilities and stormwater drainage funds, does have a slight increase at 5%, but that's being propped up almost exclusively by the increase in the hotel motel tax. And then the big mover this year is for, as usual, our non-operating funds, is our capital investments with an increase of 3.39%, and that's being pushed by a $66 million increase for MAPS 4. So just giving you some further context of how those cuts are being achieved throughout the city, you'll note that we are down 27 positions in this current year. I'll note for you again that this does not include the 20 frozen police officer positions, so we will be down to 50, 70 positions effectively throughout the city. If we break that up by departments, we have 10 departments that ended up with a reduced headcount for this year, and again, this does not include the 20 frozen police officer positions. And that is all the slides that I have for you this morning, but happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Chris, I appreciate your work on this, and appreciate the leadership that you've provided, but then also all the departments who worked on this to help put this together. Thank you. That's all that we have, Mayor.
Okay, is there any questions or comments from the Council before we vote on the resolution?
I'll make just a few quick comments. One, I want to thank Aurelius for coming and sharing his comments as well, and just echo the idea that we, our budget is a reflection of our values, and I hope that we can, in this downtime, consider ways that we can continue to support the most needy people in our community. And, and one thing that I'm very pleased, two things that, victories, I think, in this budget that I want to lift up are, one, our continued investment in mobile integrated health. I think that is such a great strategy for improving conditions in the community, for ensuring that the people who are experiencing mental health crises get the support that they need, and so I appreciate City Manager, the continued support of that effort. Secondly, I want to thank the City Manager again, and team for all, ACM Fairbush, Director Rush, for their support of Route 19 in Spencer. I know that we are going to spend the next year working on alternatives and finding another way to get that funded, but I appreciate this extension to give us some more time to find some reasonable alternatives. Appreciate the conversation that I had with Councilwoman Avers about helping me and, and trying to figure out some, some solutions, and so just really appreciate those efforts.
Just a couple remarks. One, I'd like to join Councilman Pennington in lifting up, helping to amplify the voices of the community members who came to advocate regarding Route 19, and our route to Norman. One of those residents lives in Ward Two. I can see their intersection in my head right now, and they use MAPS 4 sidewalks that we just built on Chertel, and the bike lane that's there to get down here to the bus, and that bus takes them to their job, and he relies on that 550 AM bus. So while I am a very data-driven person, I will, I will never let data remove the humanity, right, the real human being who needs to get to work, or wherever they need to get to. So I really want to thank Sherman for coming and advocating for himself, that Lynette, who is homeless, coming to advocate, you know, that's, that's powerful stuff. And I just really want to lift them up and say I'm really grateful that they added their voice to us not cutting that route, and giving us the next year to figure out how best to figure out what targeted in its delivery of service to the people who need it. So thank you, City Manager, for being receptive to those conversations, and the embark for hosting the space for those conversations as well. I'd like to make also a request, City Manager, I think you might be the one to hear. When I've looked at press releases, or when I go to the page right now about mobile integrated health, I'm really happy, of course, to see that, you know, we mentioned that this was developed in collaboration with the OKC Public Safety Partnership and the city's Crisis Intervention Advisory Group. I read a request that we include the fact that this mobile integrated healthcare, this historic moment for our city where we are better connecting people in a mental health crisis to the folk who can best stabilize them. This was born during a tumultuous summer of 2020, where people from the FOP to the NAACP came together on the Mayor's Law Enforcement Task Force, the Community Policing Working Group, to do some of the most painful work I have ever done in my life, that I'm guessing many of us who were here at the time will remember how painful that was. Protest in the streets, protest here at this, this horseshoe, and all of us not always rowing together, but because of our effort, so many wonderful things are now finding themselves implemented, and one of them during Mental Health Awareness Month is mobile integrated healthcare. But missing from this page is any reference to the Community Policing Working Group, and the members who served, from police majors, former Chief Gorley, Ward Two resident Paula Sofia, my neighbor, former police officer, current counselor, you know, we have people, Grace Franklin on the east side, who volunteered, we have volunteers who took the spirit of the protest and channeled that energy into something very tangible and productive, which will reduce harm and save lives, and something that will be all of our legacy long when we are dust. And so it really would mean a lot to me if we could put that, the Community Policing Resolution crafted not just by me, but by Amanda Carpenter, former Municipal Counselor's office. This was a community effort. As Aurelius is coming up here and talking about participatory budgets, we need to remember that these 39 recommendations in front of us were community-driven. I will never forget knocking doors in Ward Two, formerly parts of Ward Three, a very conservative man who I never met before, and when I gave him my brochure, he looked at me and he said, "Are you taking money from police?" And I was like, "We're not having that conversation right now. I want to talk to you about this mobile integrated health," which we weren't even calling it that at the time, it's an alternative response to mental health care. And he said, "That is a good idea." I want you to think about that, a half-black progressive, gay progressive, talking to a conservative, and we figured it out together. I don't know how he voted, but I know he liked the work we were doing. And I, I want our community to know that their voices mattered, and that their work and their volunteer mattered, and it's just missing from this. It's been missing from press releases, and I just think it's important. I think it's important for residents to be able to, just like when Sherman and that nice young woman who's experiencing homelessness came and advocated, I want people to always know their voices matter up here.
No, I appreciate that, and I also appreciate that you lift up that the police department had a role in this. When we... When we look at this and we bring forward the mental health, you know, the mobile integrated health, it's in the fire department. That's by design from the work that we did. It was the police department, the fire department also working together in this, agreeing that this is a better way to do the response. And so, I think it is lifting up what we're doing with the task force and the working group, making sure that we highlight that and we'll look at that. But it's been a partnership of all of us working together, and this doesn't happen without all the groups working together and continuing to work together as we actually implement it. So, I appreciate you pointing that out.
I really appreciate you hearing me because I just think that this was a, not I think, I know this was a historic moment, and I think just a simple omission can lead to an erasure of a critical historic moment in Oklahoma City's history. So, I just wanted to say that. And I'll just conclude by, and I really appreciate you hearing me on that. And really, again, Aurelius, thank you for being here. I would like just two other things. City Manager, sometime between now and when you task the departments to come up with their budgets at the end of the year, to start thinking about their budgets, I would at least like to hear some research. I'm new to the idea of participatory budgets. I don't really know much about it, but I'm intrigued. I'm intrigued, and I'm looking at Bryant Smart, finance background. Do you come from a finance background? I consider Jason Fairbrush, who is our ACM, a mentor, and he comes from a finance background. I would love to start hearing from people from our own city, you know, our institution of the city, learn from you all, but start learning a little bit more from some community members. Maybe we don't do anything. Maybe we don't. But can we at least learn a little bit more? That's one ask that I have. And then, the comment is, and I've said it before, I'm not a fan of this budget. I really am not. But I'm going to keep advocating because I have the patience of Job. Five years ago, there were community members who said some horrible, mean things to me. And not just to me, but to the people who run that community policing working group, who did not believe that the day would come that a mobile integrated healthcare system would happen in Oklahoma City. And five years later, here we are. And I wished it had happened then. You'll remember when we proposed it, we want Councilwoman Nice, Councilwoman Ham, we wanted it right then, and so did the community. And I will continue that patience because the work of that resolution is not done until a violence interruption program exists, until we are better connecting our residents to the resources, working with our faith community to do it as well, which is something I know Councilman Carter, it's always heavy on his heart, which is why I'm going to be hosting a faith outreach in Ward 2 about homelessness with Jamie Capes. So, I'm not giving up. I don't like this budget, but like I said, patience of Job and quite the workhorse. So, that's all I have to say.
Sure.
Woo-hoo. Did I make it work?
Yes, yes.
All right. So, first of all, Christian, kudos on putting together this budget. I know that there have been hundreds and thousands of hours that have gone into it. And I think as you're building and transforming, there's lots of additional challenges and moving parts that make it even more complex than if you're just executing year after year. And so, that challenge is recognized. And I can tell you as the new person at the council that, you know, I've been trying to get up to speed very, very quickly so that I could appreciate the complexity and the impact of it. I think that it's pretty well-established that I try to look at things in a little bit different way. I like to tell Councilman Cooper, it's heart and numbers. Just like whenever I go to the store with my kids, they may want everything at the store, but if I only have a certain amount in my budget, that has to be part of the conversation. And I think that that's what we've been really trying to do as we've gotten our presentations of budgets. So, I think that it's not just about, do you have enough money to do this, but are we getting value for the money that we're spending? And that's an important piece of the conversation from a budget and performance perspective. So, one of the things that I've heard as we've talked about different budgets, in some elements, we've talked about peer cities. Sometimes, we've talked about industry standards. But I haven't fully been able to connect those dots on every single budget thus far. As I was writing down my notes of where are my concerns, and I'm not saying concerns like it's wrong, it's just I don't have a full understanding yet. It's actually the items that were covered just in this last budget meeting. So, I still have questions remaining tied to our planning budget, our police budget. And then, I would appreciate a briefing from the City Manager's office on administrative changes that have been made to the budgets that were presented previously. So, because of that, I would like to request a defer to our next meeting. I know that is unnormal, but we can still get it done within the timeframe that we have to get it done. And it would give me great comfort to know that I've done my due diligence in representing and collecting the information and having real conversations about those three areas.
Okay. Well, you've heard the request for a motion. We can handle that electronically. And do you want to debate on the motion? If not, we'll take it up. Okay. I'll just, my own personal debate, I'm going to vote no and normally grant deferrals. But I mean, this is, we've had months that we've been working on this, and certainly, I always want you to have all the time that you need, but this is certainly not a process that comes at us all of a sudden. It's something we've been working on. Although granted, you didn't have quite as much time as everybody else because of your arrival here a little later through election, but certainly, I'll move forward, and we'll all move forward if that is the will of the council. I'll personally be voting no, but it is no, it's not personal. Okay. We have a motion now for a deferral of two weeks to June 17th. We have a motion and a second. Motion fails three to six. Is there any other comments, debate on item T2, the resolution adopting the fiscal year 2026 annual budget? All right. If not, we could take up the resolution if that is the desire of the council. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes seven to two. All right. Next up are some items that we always vote separately because they relate to the special public safety sales tax that was passed decades ago. So, we always kind of handle them in separate votes, but they are sort of all tied to the budget. First up is U1, which is a public hearing regarding the fire sales tax appropriations. Sorry, Amy, is there anyone who signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not. So, we'll advance to the resolution found at U2. This is actually set for final hearing on June 17th. It is being introduced today. It does pertain, as stated, to appropriations for the fire department for fiscal year 2526.
And these do align with what we presented in everything in the budget.
All right, we can bring it up if it is the council's desire to introduce the resolution today. We have a motion and a second. Passes unanimously. And item 11 V1 is a public hearing regarding a similar police sales tax appropriation. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not. So, we'll advance to the resolution found at V2. This is to be introduced and set for final hearing on June 17th. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes eight to one. And again, that's for final hearing on June 17th. All right. Well, that concludes the budget votes. Thanks to your team. I know how much work goes into it, and it's kind of, the next process starts tomorrow, pretty much.
Yes, yeah. Well, effectively, yeah. And I would say too, that I understand that there are challenges and questions on the budget and concerns. I don't like everything in the budget ever, and so, I do appreciate the cooperation and participation. And I know that regardless of where we stand and how we feel about these, we're moving forward together, and that's the intent and that's the goal. But I just want to recognize all the work from Chris and his team, but all the departments. This is a budget that's developed by those that are actually in the work and doing the work, and so, I just want to express my appreciation to them for their leadership in this and appreciate the support of the council.
City Manager, what would it look like to start studying some of that participatory budget?
We can look at that and evaluate that. I want to just clarify too, that like the charter calls for me to portray the budget and present that, we definitely can take a look. Chris has looked at what we can do with more engagement, providing more opportunities for engagement. The real difficulty that I see is it's very, very difficult to make sure you're reaching the full community.
I know, yeah.
And that's the real challenge is like just the people that show up that have a concern. And I can say, the people that showed up and spoke on the budget, I do not believe represents the majority of the community. And I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm just saying we make sure that we get a voice, you know, the concern of taking funding out of the police department, doing other things. People want to do other things, but I don't believe by and large in our community that people want to take money out of the police department to do that. They may want us to look at how we're managing that and how we're using our resources, and we're always evaluating that. But I think that's the biggest challenge that I see. I'm open to considering other processes, to look at what we incorporate to make sure we have the engagement. Ultimately, we have to make professional decisions in what we're doing to manage this budget going forward to bring to the council, and that's that ultimate responsibility. All of this can be information that informs our decisions, but it doesn't make the decisions for us.
Yeah, I think what I would, how I respond a bit back to that is, my challenge back to you for consideration is divorce in your mind if you can. I know you heard residents speak about moving money from the police budget. Divorce in your mind if you can that from a conversation about participatory budget.
Right.
Maybe, and you could, you see what I mean?
And I think, again, it's that challenge of making sure that we're getting all the voices, but I understand what you're saying.
And I think I'd want to hear, maybe it's an email to explain a little bit more, some ideas of what that outreach, that engagement, and Christian too, you know, I would like to hear more from our residents about their priorities throughout the year heading into the budget process. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So, it's been brought to my attention that Councilman Cooper would like to adopt an emergency on a previously passed zoning item. And this is item 11I. So, this was to remind you, the ordinance establishing a special permit at 2120 Northwest 39th. As you see, we always do note the potential opportunity for an emergency vote, but very rarely do we do them, but it's certainly there if that is the desire of the council member and the applicant. And apparently, in this case, it is. And so, would you like to make that motion, item I, to adopt an emergency, Councilman Cooper?
I would.
That's 11I?
Yes, sorry, yes, 11I. Yes, items for individual consideration, Councilman. Yes, they spoke, and I'm so sorry, they had sent me an email where they had in fact requested the emergency. I sometimes rely on people to ask for it when they're at the podium, so I forgive that oversight. So, I would just request an emergency for that.
All right. Let's bring that up. We have a motion and a second on the emergency for item 11I. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously and with the necessary supermajority for adoption of an emergency. We're back in order at 11W and Vice Mayor Cooper presiding.
Thank you, Mayor. You're fine? We are now on item W, and that is a resolution authorizing the municipal counselor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Sarah Britton versus City of Oklahoma City, Oklahoma County District Court. There is no request for executive session. I don't know if council members have anything that they'd say about that? Okay. I entertain a motion. Motion and a second received. Cast your votes, please. Motion passes. Thank you so much, council. We will move on now to item X, and this is a resolution authorizing municipal counselor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Steve and Jane Clark versus the City of Oklahoma City in District Court of Oklahoma County. There was no request for executive session unless council members have a comment. I would accept a motion one way or the other. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. We will now move on to item Y, and this is a request to actually enter into executive session to discuss collective bargaining negotiations for fiscal year 252026 with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 123, International Association of Firefighters, Local 157, and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 2406, as authorized by 25 section. Okay, there we go. I will accept either a motion one way or the other. I have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, council. And then, City Manager, make sure I'm getting this right. We would move this item to the end after citizens to be heard, and we'd move into executive session then. Okay. Just wanted to make sure that process was clear to everyone. Motion passes, and we will enter an executive session at the end of our council meeting or after the citizens to be heard, which will be item 13. Moving on, we're going to move to item 11Z, and that is claims recommended for denial. We do have one on. No request to enter into executive session. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes, council. Motion for denial approved. Thank you, council. And we will now move to 11AA, and that is claims recommended for approval. And we do have a claim on there under 1A. Unless there is a request to move into executive session, I would seek a motion. I have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, please. Okay, and we approve that unanimously. Thank you, council. We will now move into item 12, and that is comments from council. And we'll start with word one.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. In lieu of all the sports things that are going on, I wanted to give my appreciation and condolences to the OU women's softball team. They played a great game last night, fought very hard. They've done a great job throughout the year. And of course, our Oklahoma City Thunder, who are going to be starting their game one on Thursday. But I've got one that we don't always get to talk about very often, and I've just gone a couple of weeks ago, so I didn't get to bring it up. But I got to go to Florida a few weeks back and witness the Oklahoma City Broncos, homeschool baseball team, bring home the World Series championship for our city. And so, I just wanted to give a big shout out to those guys who busted their tail throughout the year. And I am a little biased because a couple of my boys play on that team, but they did an amazing job, and they brought home the W. And I wanted to give a big shout out to Councilman Stone, Councilman Stone Cypher and municipal Councilor Lord McGivitt for their birthdays this week, and happy birthday.
Thank you, Counselor Carter. Word three.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Word four. Word five.
I want to, excuse me, want to thank Toon Nguyen for inviting me to the Bya Val Alex. I'm not even going to try to say the name of the church. It's the St. Andrews Vietnamese Church. Couple of weekends ago, they had a big, huge event, probably 2,000 people there, and they were very welcoming and glad that we were involved. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Word six, word seven, word eight.
I was able to go to the last home game with you and others, and I just wanted to comment that we have some of the greatest basketball fans in the world. I have never heard that facility that loud that night. I'm looking forward to that happening again this Thursday, so all I have to say is go Thunder.
Thank you. And I'll just add briefly, and I'll have some photos next time I'm up here, but I just wanted to say thank you to utilities and to waste management. I was able to take a tour of our recycling facility on Northwest Fourth Street and walk through the whole process. And like I said, I'll put some photos to it next time I'm up here, but for now, for people who are concerned regarding them placing materials in their recycling bin and wondering where they go, we learned that 70% of the materials that our recycling facility receives makes its way not to our landfills, but through a recycling process. And this is an important thing, you know, during the tour, y'all know me, I love to start bringing up PBS or something like that, but during the tour, I did. start bringing up PBS or something like that, but during the tour, I did, I brought up a PBS NewsHour article that was talking about, I think, where a lot of those concerns come from, because China as a country, once upon a time, very recently, once upon a time, was one of the major purchasers of recyclable materials. And they no longer do that. And so something smartly that waste management alongside utilities is doing right now is there are local and regional partnerships, manufacturing partnerships that they have entered into, and that's where we send a lot of our, 70% of our material that residents send in. So I just wanted to give a little bit of gratitude, but also, not just to waste management and to utilities, but to our residents for actually participating in this recycling program. So, and also just thank you for arranging that, that tour. And then, just as a bit of a public safety, or sorry, public service announcement, and I'll have the photos with me next time to kind of drive it on home, but the 30% is where I still have the concerns, right? One of the major things we see is people will put their recyclables in a plastic bag. That plastic bag, no plastic bags need to go into the green, it needs to go into the big blue. Unfortunately, you might remember our state legislature passed preemption laws that prevented municipalities from banning the use, or prohibiting, or even reducing the use of plastic bags. And those plastic bags, that was in 2019, by the way, those plastic bags make their way into the gears, and those gears get gummed up and for hours shut down the work of recycling. And so, it's very important that you Google OKC recycling program, because we have the do's and the don'ts of what to put in there, and those plastics are what we call a major contaminant. And literally will disrupt the work that needs to go on there. Speaking of the work, I really want to give much love and gratitude to the workers there. It is so impressive, they have the personal protective gear on, the gloves to keep them from, as the glass that they're receiving, and all this material that they're just sorting through, they've never seen the material before, they don't know what's in there, but on this conveyor belt, they're just, with the protective gear, being able to, you know, whoosh, whoosh, like the flash. And then unfortunately, we get this 30% pile of the contamination. So brittle plastics is another big one, so if you can drop it to the ground and it can shatter as plastic, that's something that does not need to go in there as well. So I'll have some photos for us next time, kind of walk us through precisely what those photos are, but for now, much love and gratitude to the workers and to our team for getting us out there, and to the residents for their participation. And that is all I have, and we will now move on to item 13, and that is citizens to be heard, and we do in fact have three citizens. We'll start with Ronnie Kirk. And if you wouldn't mind stating your first and last name, you know the drill, but first and last name, your address, and then you'll have three minutes, and you'll want to keep an eye on the TV, because those three minutes will be there. City Clerk will tell you when your 30 seconds are ready.
My name is, my name is Ronnie Kirk. My address is 2328 North Missouri. I come down today, once again, to talk about giving our police more training. You know, two weeks ago, over in our county jail, a man got beat to death for 20 minutes. You know, all them jail cell got a buzzer where you can call down to where the jail is. She didn't answer the phone. By the time she did answer the phone, the man was dead. Two weeks ago, they had some training for about 60 new police. It was for them to take stress tests, for our new police to take stress tests. They need to take tests and de-escalation. They need to take tests to find out if Ronnie Kirk is mental. They need to know if I'm drunk. They shouldn't assume, since we got all these open gun laws, a marijuana joint on every corner, and two of them in some blocks. They should assume I'm high. They give us all these things for recreation, so they shouldn't have to assume. The person that's taking the call, they should ask more questions. Is that person known to you? Do we have a weapon? Is he mental, or is she mental? So you know how the police should respond to the person, instead of asking questions after the man that did. I didn't know he was mental. Those are the questions that the dispatcher should be already given
30 seconds.
...to the police. Then they know how to handle the situation. You know, the city's really grown. Boy, we got many places to go to. You ride down the street, kids, families, man with an AR-15 on his side. You don't even know if he's mental, but he got permit to carry this AR-15. You know, y'all need to get together, you're doing a great job for the city. Just make a battle for us. Give it to them senators, having to repeal them gun laws. We're going into the future well. We should be able to enjoy this city. Boy, it's beautiful. I want to say thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. I appreciate you. Okay, next up, we have Steve Hunt, and you'll want to give your first and last name and your address, and you'll keep an eye on the three minutes, and City Clerk will tell you when you have your 30 seconds at the end.
Right, Steve Hunt, 2825 Northwest 57th, Ward James. So I want to apologize to Joe Beth and Craig for last time I was here, just said some things that, you know, very passionate person, as they say, and a friend said, "Don't do anything," within a couple of years after losing your mother, and I just had been in a really difficult place, the things that I saw over the past several years dealing with that. Obviously, I'm in a weird place with the Thunder. You know, I have a lot of interactions with the Thunder Swindles, and I lost my job at the National when Dave had me speak after Gary Brooks. You know, I was working as concierge at the National, and two days after speaking, they had me in the office, and they're like, "Steve, you're, you're one of our best employees. I just can't have you here." And that, that killed me. I mean, because I was driving people from out of town to Red Cup and Golden Phoenix, and you know, it was, it was great. And like, two days after that, Dave's wife gets a $300,000 job at United Way, is like, is a bit much to handle. So I had wanted to mention this thing about Patience Lattin and having more native blood in her than Dave. I think everyone has seen this, I don't know if you all have looked at this, but it's very troubling to me that Dave is running around talking about being the first native mayor, not just because he's 7/8 Wedaco Bro, but also that Patience actually was, and she didn't broadcast her native heritage because her family, or her father, got rid of his Dow's role because that would prevent him from owning a home, and so it's kind of, but you know, whatever, I don't really think any of that matters anymore, because he's going to do what he's going to do. James, thanks for mentioning fertile ground. I think one thing that bothers me about the Thunder is that so many good people like them have been left out of the equation, you know, like years ago, I was trying to get Perry Broadcasting in on the broadcast rights, and you know, they just laughed at me, like, "We're going to give it to Nevada Citadel."
30 seconds remaining.
And now, here we are, the TV broadcasts are a Maryland company, it's FanDuel Sports, because Bally went bankrupt. And interestingly, interestingly, Bally and FanDuel are owned by the same person. And I was at SMB the other day, I'm just kind of rambling now with my, I was at SMB the other day, and they, they weren't able to show the game there because they don't have the cable or whatever, and so there's a lot, that's something that I'd like to consider in the future, is that a lot of local owners like SMB are being hurt by the decisions that have been made and all that. So, once again, yeah, sorry about last time, you know, Joe Beth, I really like you, Craig, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Mark Falk. First and last name and your address, and you'll have the three minutes, you know the drill, and I'll let you know your 30 seconds at the end.
Yeah, my name is Mark Falk. My address is 803 Northwest 32nd Street, Oklahoma City. I want to talk a little bit today about our county jail, which seems like it would not have anything to do with Oklahoma City, but it very much does. Oklahoma City puts about, I believe, around 60% of the people in the jail are from Oklahoma City. As you all, some of you know, with the People's Council for Justice Reform, we have spent the last four to five years trying to reduce the jail population. I applaud the city for the 39 things that we're implementing with the police department of Oklahoma City. I think one that is very important would be to implement site and release. At this point in our history, we do not need to continue to put people in jail for low-level offenses. I would say there is no better example of that than two weeks ago, when 60 police officers arrested 154 mostly Hispanic people at what was described, depending on who's doing the describing, as either a block party or street racing. But I do know this, the vast majority of those charges, the vast majority of them were for unlawful assembly. The jail was overwhelmed, they only have at the most six people working on the weekends, understaffed. That's a separate problem to deal with, with the county. But when you bring in 154 people, of which 92 were booked into that jail, many of them were held in handcuffs for up to six hours. Many of them were held for hours, and I believe some of them even overnight, once their bond was made. There was no communication between the jail and the police department that these people were coming into the jail. Was it a racist arrest? I won't go into that today, I have my own opinion of that, but I will say this, I believe that it's important that we, as a city, begin to look at how we can work with the county to reduce the jail population. They don't have the money to build a new jail, so right now, what we need to do is do what other municipalities have done, reduce the population
30 seconds.
And then maybe we get away with building a smaller jail. I would urge, those, those charges were kicked down to municipal level. I would urge Counselor Kenneth Jordan to dismiss any of the lowest level charges on that, I think they were unnecessary. And finally, the other thing I want to say, first of all, happy pride, but I also want to say, there is an employee who works for Oklahoma City. His name, let's see, let me think of it, he is, he is the anchor Baptist church preacher. I believe his last name is Laws, you all may know that, but he is an employee of Oklahoma City. He is also the preacher of a church where he has preached the execution of homosexuals, and where he has preached the execution of other pastors or preachers who support the LGBTQ community. I would suggest that you all take a long, hard look at that. I would like to see him fired from Oklahoma City, this was reported in the media. We do not need that kind of hatred in our city, we do not need that kind of people working for the city. Other employees have spoken out and said that they fear for their safety, once they heard who he was and what he said. So I, again, would suggest that you have a discussion about that, and I would just like to say, I hope that in the end
Your time's up.
...everyone is, everyone is welcome in Oklahoma City, and that's what we need to work towards. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I believe with that, we, oh, we have the executive session. Thank you, Counselor, I was going to not, and thank you all for your comments. We're going to come right back in, not while, but right back in here, but we'll be back. Yes, ma'am.